Seven in progress and we'll say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Director?
Justin Lee.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Visitors comments. Any comments from the visitors? Hearing none. Special recognitions and honors. Chip?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the community. I'm honored to honor two particular staff members. I don't know if everybody is aware, but there's pressures and Tiffany Cowan has received the 2022 National Excellence in Teaching about Ancient Culture Award. As you're aware, she's a first year with us at Minnewaska, but she's been a teacher and a very strong advocate for FFA, 4H, and FACS and our entire region, so congratulations to her. I don't know if she's in the audience tonight.
She's not.
Okay, and then we did have Molly Polia, who has done an incredible job as our DAC. Last year, we hired her, just, what, last June? And she stepped in and done an phenomenal job. She does assessments for all of our kids in all the buildings. And we were honored this year by the Minister of Department of Ed. We had no major concerns or findings during the testing process or experience, so I just want to say thank you to her. And then, Mr. Chair, I'd also remiss if I didn't share that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I know there's a lot of activities planned. Wednesday is also Professional Administration Professionals Day, so if you get a chance, say something to those individuals as we approach the week, but I just want to recognize those two people, our teachers and our admin professionals.
Very good. Thank you. Approve of minutes of following meetings. There goes a meeting from March twenty eighth. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Angie. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Consider approval claims, council donations, and gifts.
There's a copy of the bills projecting they spoke shortly. I know Drew's in the audience. Drew, did he want to touch on the first end?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay. I don't know if you can see this. I'll try to zoom in a little bit. Okay, so you can see the total in checks written. Let me just see where this scroll. I don't see them too much. So you see electronic transfer, that just goes to pay the, off the, off our, off our bills that we collected off our referendum dollars. You can see district checks written on, you know, through the twenty fifth, the add-ons, so those are after the board published agenda. And then you see your interim checks written up to this point. So going through the bills, you can see, this Alexandria, that's just our PSO and CIS courses, so you're aware. We have the trip, with the New York trip, Drew, so that's why you see a large credit card bill this last month. And then you can go through. There's no major issues, you know, this month as usual, so those are the big pieces. And you can see the first payment of our scoreboard. And then I think he just took a chance, or took a look at the bleachers. And then, we're aware that there might be a couple additional expenses coming up in the next month. That, just some minor things. Did Bill mention those?
Yep.
Chair? Okay, so those we can run, but right now, as for the bills, everything's within budget. No discrepancies there. So let's go to investment report. You can see just our standard monthly investment report of, I think it's around a thousand dollars. Actual interest accrued, nine thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents. So that's your investment report. Food service, I don't know if Bridget's in the audience, I don't know if she is. But you can see our food service is still very strong, right here. Zoom in here. Those are expenses, one oh four. You can see our profit here. So revenue, nine thirty-six, expense seven forty-eight, so you can see their food service balance of one eighty-eight. We've been working with Bridget and will continue to work with Drew, but you'll see some capital projects for the summer. Drew, did he get Prop four TV yet for consideration? Have you seen anything yet?
Um, not yet.
Okay. Well, I know we're looking at kitchen remodel, and I would just bring up and trend the food service report. We also got audited by MDE. So it's kind of like full circle. My first year, when I came here five years ago, we got audited. That turned into a thirteen page, basically we're gonna pull over our food service, we made corrections in the first, you know, in a hundred and eighty days. We were audited last month by MDE, same audit at elementary, and they actually took two pages of those to Menacops, the rest of Minnesota, for all the improvements in food service, because we do some things that no one, they had not seen anywhere else. To Bridget and the entire food service team, and just incredible job during that food audit. And what, what, what we do differently than most any school, we have somebody during the serving of our elementary kids that encourages kids to take fruits and vegetables, which they haven't seen many places, so kudos to them. And then revenue and expense reports, you can just see, we had to have a draw on our ESSR dollars. So you're starting around the time that you had to have a draw on ESSR. You can see our total revenue here at fifty-nine percent. You're not gonna see that in here, but I would just say that's in addition to our revenue, so you gotta start taking on some of our ESSR dollars. And then we look at... I don't know if I get back to the expenditure one now. Anyways, oh, there it is. There's our expense report. You can see we're at about seventy-eight percent, so we're at the end of the month, so. Our revenue just catch up to our expenditures, that's why I carry it on balance, because you get different installments and noise, but that's our overall report, superintendent's report. I can share with the board. I just have to complete the change screens here. Give me thirty seconds here and I'll pulse this up. For the board, overall COVID, we've seen a drastic decrease, obviously, and that trend's continued this spring. So right now, I believe, I'll be there in two seconds. Okay, so... Sorry, the little electrons is basically taking the time, so... Let me know if you can see the COVID dashboard pop up there in a second. Okay. Can you see the hip board, regular board meeting?
The COVID dashboard's up.
Yep. So you can see here with our COVID dashboard, we're at three students and staff infection, so we continue to watch that. That's at Wynn, so I just wanted to put kudos out. We continue to watch and monitor, and we've seen a pretty significant reduction. Those are our, tonight, if we take a look at our special recognitions, which we just did. Nate's gonna share alternate learning program that he's working on at high school. And then you'll start talking about the teachers agreement, the memorandum of strength, that's a TOSA. And then traditionally, our district Title I staff reduction, so going through that piece. And then in activities committee event tonight, so they can show that out later on, for staff findings, for the board. When it comes updates, tonight you're gonna make a recommendation that we hire our Soul Studies teacher, see if I can find him, consent agenda. We do not have a lead on industrial tech teacher at this time. Facts, we, you just recognized Mrs. Cowman, she's gonna come back next year, we have the bolster position because she's not licensed. We have billed, Scott, I think we've billed. We had two second grade openings and interventions, I think we billed two, but we still have one opening. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we have upper elementary opening that we'll take a look at and interventions, so we'll continue to interview this spring. Tonight, you'll be approving, we had two P openings, you're gonna be approving one. Another person we offered a position to, accepted, and then two weeks later turned us down, so that's reposted, we do have some applications. I can't believe this, but we actually have a special education position that we posted that's billed, so that's great news. We actually hired two licensed special ed teachers this spring. And tonight, we'll be recommending a new science teacher. She's a local grad, so excited to hear we're back. And then I'll make a recommendation for our principal slash special ed coordinator at Wynn. We interviewed four, we had twelve applicants recommended to fill there. And then we did have some interventions filled, but now we have another opening. So I think we have two interventions for those to fill. Laker Foundation, Angie's been working hard, and you'll start seeing some graphics come to the board for approval. This is kind of what it looked like, so Laker Foundation met, so like a donor would look like, so for board members, if you want to get your checkbook out, we could have you to be legendary. And then next week, there is an article that's going in the paper that we already put in, and I did write a letter that's gonna go out to recognize all our staff members, so. Mr. Chair, that completes our board report.
Entertainer motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. DAC, one second.
Yep.
One second. Nick, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, here's a copy of our donations. You can see the Minnewaska Baseball Association, David Thompson, the school readiness donation, two thousand dollars at Casey's, for forty-eight forty.
Also, that was the donations and gifts.
Donations and gifts. I'll make a motion to accept the donations and gifts.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, you can see just a ton of our spring sports hires, we also hired off our Laker legends for the summer, so that's been great news, and I want to thank Dale Mills and his team for all the work on that. We're also gonna see some recommendations in Tessa, she'll be a new special ed teacher at Wynn. Mr. Kressler for Soul Studies, you can see a list of our, you know, a lot of hiring for next year, so. Those are our hires. Next, we have our retirements. So congratulations to Connie Hill, who's gonna be retiring this year, and Ted Hill is gonna be retiring, then we're gonna need some Soul Studies back, so we'll worry about that this summer and how much we need. And then next, we do have a couple resignations that I will be approving tonight, so that's the consent agenda.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Derek, you wanna make a motion?
Thank you, Ted. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Me.
Mr. Meister?
Heard it up.
And so as, as, as our principals come up to share tonight, I've been working with Nate and his team a couple of years ago, so right now, with the restructuring, which Justin has found the restructuring of Raid, we use the Alternative Learning Center, so if a student is not in good academic standing, Nate and his team can make recommendations to send somebody to the alternative school, that's on the north of Nevada. And so you do consistently see some students that don't make academic progress, so Nate and his team have worked together to bring up an area learning program to Minnewaska, so I invited him tonight to share with the board.
Yeah, so to kind of piggyback on what Chip said, we lose, and I don't have the exact specifics, but we lose roughly a couple kids, a couple seniors each and every year, and it seems to be at the exact same time, once we tip over that January seventeenth to get into second semester, all of a sudden, it seems that seniors start to realize the writing on the wall, and all of a sudden, they give up. They quit wherever they go, but that also happens at the junior level of that senior crew and the sophomore, so if you add it all up, by the time they go through their whole entire class, you're losing, you know, five, six kids per grade by the time they become seniors. Now, we get kids, right? We get kids from Morris, we get kids from BBE, and so it's, it is kind of a revolving door, but one thing is consistent, is you see the, that students need to qualify for a program like this, and it's, you know, one year behind us after completing work, chemical dependent, physically or sexually abused, experiencing mental health issues, excluded or expelled. So there's very specific criteria that you have to meet these, these, to be a part of the ALP. And like Chip said, Runestone is going through a process, and our current credit recovery plan here, if we have a student, we recommend them either retake a class here, which will obviously set them back a little bit. We do have a little bit of kind of credit recovery through some study hall stuff, where they're taking some Edge Annuity courses, but if they are significantly behind, we recommend them to attend Runestone. And it is a, it's, it's a hike up there, so travel tends to be an issue, scheduling tends to be an issue. And we just don't see kids often taking that advantage, so they stay with us. And we try to do the best we possibly can, but by the time they're seniors, they're struggling to graduate, and we see them fall through the cracks. So the, the idea is, the idea is to, and kind of the proposal is to hire, the proposed budget you see there is, is actually for the Department of Education as well, that was part of the application. And we would hire a program coordinator, and they would be in essence, obviously, they would have a teaching degree, so they would, they would cover one of those sections, but the idea would be to have three other teachers to teach the four core areas for one hour per day. We're already, we, we are at that seventy-seven hundred dollars right there, we already have those teachers in our system, so it's not a new, that's not a new cost. And then the ten thousand dollar proposed budget for Edge Annuity, we already have Edge Annuity through us and Wynn Academy. So we already have a budget built for Edge Annuity, it would just be a little bit of an increase. So really, the, the only, the only new monies would be that program coordinator, and they would obviously be teaching as well. And I've got a lead, and I've talked to a retired teacher that is, has some interest in it, so. The goal, really, at the end of the day is to, is to keep our kids here and not lose them to online, not lose them to Raid, and not lose them to quitting school. And my, just in general conversation at my Western Division meetings with, with area principals, that, that one to two we're fearful is gonna continue to grow with COVID over the next few years. That that is gonna pull up to five, six, and who knows what that number is, just because there were a lot of kids that kind of fell through those cracks the last couple years. And we don't know the, you know, we don't know the magnitude of that. And this is obviously a non-traditional setting. I mean, the, the idea is, we could, we could house a kid full-time with the ALP, they could do part-time, where they're doing maybe one or two ALP classes, maybe an ALP math and ALP science, and then they're in the Gen Ed for the remainder of the time. And then, and then we could, we're also looking at doing some work-based learning, so implementing that co-op program that we already have to get our kids that do qualify and do go through the ALP setting, that we can get them out doing some work-based learning as soon as possible as well, so. That's kind of the, that's kind of the proposed plan, it's still kind of like building the airplane as we're flying up. We've, I'm gonna meet with Benson runs an ALP, Perrin also runs an ALP. And also communicating with, with Carla and Tina up at Raid.
What type of physical place would you need?
The physical place is, is a classroom. And, and so that, obviously, we're gonna have to get creative, because I think I'm speaking on the level three next, which takes space as well. But we have some ideas with the high school, just in general, you know, Ted Hill's retiring, we're hiring another one, but Ted Hill's gonna come back and teach some, so we have, we have a surplus of teachers, we have more teachers than we have rooms, so we gotta get creative with that anyways.
So I'm understanding that this is basically a cost neutral, we save four people
Correct.
from leaving the district.
Correct. And, and, you know, right now, we have, as of this week, Gen Ring has talked to high school seniors that are probably not gonna be walking to twenty-seven, and those would be two perfect candidates that would, that would be perfect for this.
I would add that typically, those kids that repeat, like, say I have a tenth grader in tenth grade biology, they don't pass, they come back in my classroom to try to do the same thing over again, typically, results are the same.
Right.
So they really need just a different setting for that student, because if it didn't work the first time, it rarely works the second time either. And then they're also, they're an older kid, they're one year back, young class, and there's a stigma to that, and that's not a positive thing either, so. There's some good benefits to this.
And that's a good, and that's a good point. I mean, like, like you just said, our, our setup right now is you fail English nine, you go back to English nine, and we're gonna teach you the exact same way. Everything's gonna work. When you're a tenth grader. Everything's gonna be the same.
Or a year older.
We're just gonna say this time you're gonna pass it.
And you're not with your normal classmates, which makes it
Correct.
a stigma.
And if they fail it, we've had a couple kids fail it multiple times, so now they're, they're a junior taking a freshman class and negative interactions behind that, so.
It'd be much better just to pull them, like you said before, they could stay in the regular classes, but just pull them off for that, that catch-up class, you know, around one environment, I think that's great.
Correct. What are some of these other schools, like you mentioned Benson, I mean, what is their retention? What are they seeing, you know, these kids that have just been floating away from Minnewaska? That same student in the Benson scenario where they already have it? Are they retaining? I don't know specifics on that, but what we're seeing is the online is stealing our kids, more so. Going to IQ Academy, going to Minnesota Connections Academy. We do have a cooperative that we've continued to, to house two of our students this year. South West Service Co-op has a Stars Academy, where we kind of tuition a little bit out. That's very similar to this, so we've actually been able to keep two kids. But that's the biggest one over the last, probably three, four years, is online academies that are, that are pulling kids.
Is that gonna change?
No, it's not, it's not, but it's, it's, I mean, the goal of us housing our own ALP would be to, if we could keep three, four kids per year, because it's, I mean, we've had two freshmen that have gone online this year, we've got a sophomore go online, and now we've got those two or three seniors that are kind of on that bubble.
And I'd add to that, those kids that go online, lots of times, the grass is not greener, and then they come back to us, but now they're way behind it because we weren't able to keep tabs on them.
Do you think having this option will stop them from going online, or do you think those guys want to go to the building?
I think it will help. I think it will help.
Right. But it's a place for them to come back to. If you're, if it doesn't
We're gonna, we'll be able to give them something different. That's what they're looking for, they're looking for something different, and if we can't offer it, that's when they leave, so if we can give them something different, that's what I would see the appeal to us.
And that's where, and that's where we are going to build in some of that work-based learning as well, get their cores, get an elective in there, and then if we can, get them off, off-site, because a lot of them, like you said, they want to be off-site. And, and, and a percentage of this crew is, I mean, they're, they're gonna be using their hands.
How many Minnewaska district kids do we have at Runestone?
There's five FTEs there right now.
And partials, we've got, I know off the top of my head, four high school seniors that are, that are doing seat time right now.
Sure.
They're, they're full-time Minewaska kids, and they're dual-enrolled, so they're, they're getting both, which this could help eliminate that.
Yeah.
So we send a kid, one of the kids, we send in the middle of sixth period, at one thirty, he takes off, and goes and, and recovers it.
Mr. Chair, my recommendation is that we have two years of COVID money, even though this will pay for itself, but I think we're gonna pile up the next few years, see if we get our participation. And I think what's most important about all of this, I think we all acknowledge our rigor could use even a little level up. You can't rise, you know, you can't, you know, it's like a high line, you can't add another twenty feet higher unless you got a safety net, so having some fallback alternative methods for kids to pick up some credits they might lose as you pick up the rigor for everybody is essential, so. I think we have some opportunities to fund it for the next, and long-term, even like, like you said, if you can save four kids a grade, which we're kind of losing, because your grad, our grad rate has not been a hundred percent, it will help us long-term pay for it.
I mean, obviously, space is an issue, though.
It is an issue, yeah, and, and the plan for that is, I mean, at any, at any given time, we have a handful of teachers that are on prep, right? So, so the idea would be, right now, Chris Vennas, you're sharing, you've got, how many science teachers that are sharing?
Ryan Christian is in, uses my room two hours after the date.
Right, so when, when he's on prep, he goes to the staff lounge, and Ryan is in his classroom, so we would look at, at doing that very similar. Science is kind of locked in.
Yeah, I mean, those rooms, you need to be in a separate room.
But, but I can teach social studies sitting right here. I mean, social studies teachers can be in a, in a general ed class.
Whatever, whatever happened to our rooms in the media center?
Our rooms.
The plan of doing that?
Yeah, it's been talked about, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not, it's a discussion person all the time, but.
Yeah.
I mean. Well, and space is getting better.
Yeah, on this plan, just, just the conversation we're having in committee dinner night, when we're first going over, the biggest thing, these for a couple of us, and we talked about it after, and mind blank, but everybody was there. But anyway, just, I'd like to constantly have the money, we have this COVID money that we can use it for right now. Right now, we're talking about making sure we're, eyes are full, that it's a long-term program, we started doing this for two years, we're working with ninth and tenth graders now.
You want
We need, we need to make sure that that's there in the year three and four then, because it just, it, we need to keep, however, however we're gonna keep funding this forward, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get into it, I think it's a great idea, but we need to also then make sure we're looking at how we're funding it moving forward. It's not a huge expense to fund it, but like I said, if it's, it's getting that return, I just, we don't want to have a couple of kids in it for two years and all of a sudden, oh, by the way, we're done with it.
Well, I think the only way you really close it down is if you don't have a solid resolve.
Right.
Right?
Probably, yep.
Right. And we won't know those numbers until we start doing it.
Although, broad data, I have for two years, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just make sure that I do my best to get numbers.
And just remember that there is, there is other revenue streams, so it would get us off running, but every student that's in this program generates point two extra funding, so you get the base eight plus point two more.
Sure.
So Drew knows that, the other thing too is like, when you figure your, your slant jobs out, you do get three hundred eighty-some thousand dollars in compensation aid, that's meant to target learners that are, you know, some reluctant learners, so there are, there are monies generated to pay for these, that's why some schools use them, and they dedicate, they earmark this, so we can use over the next few years, Drew and I will work and target this money in the budget, so it's, it's there.
Well, I mean, back to like the, the space thing too, or recall from the conversation, the nice thing is, is that you have the one teacher dedicated, but you can have up to four different, or, you know, you can have sci, one kid's are in science, you can have one kid doing math, you can have another one in English, so it's not like you're gonna have to dedicate multiple rooms to it.
No, it would be, it would be one classroom per hour.
Yeah. You know, and just kind of shift them around as far as where you've got
But you three might be working on, you three might be working on English, I might be working on social studies, but we will have a dedicated license teacher in there during that class.
Yeah, so then at least it kind of alleviates a little bit that space concern too, with not, you know.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh. Thank you very much, Nate.
Yep.
This would be for next year.
We would be rolling it out next year.
Okay.
Yep.
Consider approval of the twenty-one to twenty-three Minnesota Teachers Association Master Agreement.
Consider approval of the twenty-one to twenty-three Minnesota Teachers Association Master Agreement.
Mister Chair, the personnel committee met uh. For the last seven, eight months, and so um. Uh you can see the files, so I'll turn over the the personnel committee report back to the full board of them. Today you'll be approving a two-year contract, this year, next year's contract with our Teachers Association. Basically, it's a three-in-three, some increase in health insurance, three and three percent on the on the uh. On the salary grid and then it's uh. I think it's a hundred, or it's seventy and forty on the insurance that is in there and then uh this year and then next year. And then there's our full-time money for some full-time retirement benefits for a particular group of staff members, it's in a MOU, a separate MOU.
Any questions on that, I think everybody's. Already discussed it, everybody should be on the same page there.
Well, but like the three and three, we're budgeted at two and a half and two and a half, right?
Correct.
What is the, what is the difference in the budget with what we're gonna be voting on to compared to what we were budgeted? Dollar loan?
It's worth a hundred and two thousand dollars over two years.
So twenty twenty-two, which we got a couple of months left, so it's fair to say it's fifty thousand dollars higher.
Yes.
And then it'd be fifty thousand for next year.
Well, we said anymore because you'll have uh the half a percent and the next year's salary, so it compounds, so it's slightly more. While we do have some members that are leaving, so yeah, we think we estimate like fifty-two, fifty-six thousand.
And then this, this vote tonight will basically be good for. A year and a couple of months moving forward and then it'll be starting. All again, correct? Yep, so basically you'll start this fall talking about next year.
Well, we always seem to talk about it like like at the staff, yeah, the summer, maybe the summer.
Yeah, so like one year, one year from now, you'll start talking about the next.
The next two years.
The next two-year contracts.
Seems like it's every three months we talk about it, a year goes by so fast.
I don't feel like we ever stopped talking about it.
Any other questions? Not all entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, you have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nick, this is a roll call vote, so Barstis is yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Reichman.
Yep.
Kugusberg?
Yes.
A Reichman?
Yes.
Legred?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consider approval of memorandum of owners staying in teacher on special assignment.
So for members of the board, uh for Bill, uh going back a long time ago, he was on a separate contract. Um you know, I've talked to our attorney and I've talked to our employee here. The teacher on special assignment allows Bill Johnstur to remain on the security list, his salary is based off the teacher's salary schedule. Um it allows him to stay in the bargaining group, um but it provides a framework, so I work with. The MTA president who's in the audience and uh with our employee and draft this up, so. All parties could agree on, so I recommend approval tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve, I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Uh item thirteen, terminate district title one staff pending federal funding, this is something you do every year, I believe, right Chip?
Yes.
All entertain a motion? Nick beat you. Angie gets the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries, consider approval of designation of identified officials with authority for the. MD External User Access Recertification System.
Yeah, there's like forty-five portals in MD, you basically authorize me to go in and authorize who can be in in those portals. It's an annual requirement for the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That was that, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose, motion carries, consider approval, resolution, designation, med, certi LLC. And Matrix Trust's Health Reimbursement Arrangement trustee.
Yeah, this is just an annual requirement we need to take, so we can be partners of a certain healthcare uh coverage that our employees are part of.
I like motion to approve.
Nick makes motion, we have a second. T Reichman seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries, consider approval of the contract with Greenlawn's.
Ethan, would you mind sharing with the board, uh I know it's uh it's sizable compared to what's been in the past.
Yeah, there was a little bit of a sticker shock here and then, believe it or not, it actually was a. Unnegotiated number down, uh from what it could have been, it would have been well over thirty grand. Um but this was the best possible deal we could get, there was an original number given, which was. Pretty much everything in the full package, um and I kind of worked with John from Greenlawn's to say, okay. Um is everything in here exactly what we need? And he admitted, no, not necessarily, in a perfect world, you probably would have everything on there, but we just were not able to make that happen. Um is there any questions about what's actually in this with the the two-step program for the fertilizer? Um in low-traffic areas, three-step program for the high-traffic, and then the fairground weed control. Um as well as aeration of athletic fields.
Um what's different than what we've done in the past?
Um so. It used to be a two-step application for the fertilizer and was recommended to go to three in the high-traffic areas, so. Uh green spaces out in front of the building, uh around parking lots and whatnot, that the public is gonna see on a daily basis. Gets that extra step in the summer rather than a spring and a fall, where places like behind the buildings, so like fire making sheds. People aren't gonna see those typically, um that would be left the same, um athletic fields as well. Um there was actually talk of going to a four-step on that, but we ultimately decided to, based on cost, move away from that. Uh keep it three-step, uh spring, summer and fall. Um and then there was aeration proposed um on places like the the practice football field. Places that you might not need every single year, um and that was suggested to possibly take out. Um then we left it um like varsity baseball fields, softball fields and whatnot, still getting high um the high-traffic.
Did they recommend the aeration stuff because it's needed or just because that's something they wanted to do? Or you know what I mean, like, cause it's customary to do that once a year or something?
Um.
Or is it showing machiness that would require?
It definitely makes your field better.
Right.
Um I mean, if you're looking for a long-term athletic field program, you definitely wanna add that in. Um but based on cost, there was a little bit of a negotiation on what, like I was being sold, I felt in some cases, but. He was good about it, he was good about saying whether or not we actually needed it.
Yeah, and it's just allows us the one-year contract at least though, so we can look at how it turns out and then we can decide next year whether they. Do work or didn't work or and then just look at getting other options. Just like.
T Reichman. Thank you Ted, I will second, all in favor? Pose, motion carries, retreating the following school year handbooks.
Consider them read.
Consider them read. Consideration proposed school policies.
I didn't get through six oh six from the last one, I had to go up to six oh three.
You cannot make a motion, man.
But either those, but yeah, I'll go aside on all those that that just come out of that committee today, those. Standard MSPs stuff and the policies, the handbooks, there are a few changes, uh few wordish things that. They're still kind of putting their final drafts together, they wait, we have the first, the final draft, but nothing too crazy coming out of them.
Something.
Yeah, it's some some wardrobe clarifications and things like that, nothing too outlandish that.
We can't wear hats yet?
Still can't wear hats, still still discussing that in the future, but not, no.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you Zach, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries. Board members to hand out diplomas at commencement.
Um I did get uh word from the high school office is planning the graduation for two board members. So if there's two board members that are willing to sit up there, it would be awesome.
And do we have any?
We don't have room for seven of us that have it in the last three years that we've been doing it?
Well, if you really wanted to, I mean.
No, I'm just saying, like, we've opened it up to all.
Uh it just, all seven board members, the graduation schedule will be set up like elections day. Uh whatever you do, just pull that off, so there'll be ample room for the entire board if they wanna be there.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm just clarifying that, so we, a lot of us have been there, but.
Right.
All of the sides, when they say two.
We should all go, but two people hand out diplomas, is that, is that what we're thinking or?
We could, we could arrange a lot of things and we could rotate, you could do lots of different things, but we could work through that.
I guess, who wants to get graduation?
I do, I do, I I wanna hand out diplomas if possible.
Well, and that's something that Chip and I actually were talking about the last two years, obviously.
Can we just stop and say?
Yep.
This is a board meeting, there's public comment, and we've kind of gotten sloppy the last two months. The board's in session, so I I I know we're all close personal friends and the thing is that people watch this. And then there's a contentious thing about three or four months and then it'll be a dialogue, so I would just say, Mister Chair.
You can answer it though.
No, that's fine.
So what I'm hearing is pretty much everybody will be there unless something crazy comes up between now and then with us. So we would all like to be there and then Angie, if you wanna work with that team or your guys or whoever. Figuring out how we're going to interact with handing out diplomas. If it can be all of us, great, if it's, if it works better for two people, we'll figure it out amongst ourselves, but we'll all be there.
Okay.
Fair enough? Announcements, Chip?
Uh Mister Chair, I think uh looking at the agenda that uh was provided, we have some meeting dates coming up, so. Um I'll pull those up quick, uh but uh we're looking at having uh. Let me just do the calendar here, so uh our board meeting in 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 May is early, so it's on the sixteenth. Uh so uh obviously, safe announcements, we have the day of carrying come up on the board. So if you have projects wanna help participate, any of them are welcome to, uh but then May goes really quick, so we have a board meeting on the sixteenth. We have two of these public relations on the twenty-fifth, uh we're gonna have a board work session. On June eighth, it would be great, everybody can circle their calendar now, it's gonna start at six fifteen. But Mister Chair, uh inside my office, I have a site logic book for every member of the board. Uh but we're gonna have a formal presentation, so I think the facilities committee got that report. But uh Angie, if you'd go in my office, there's a blue book for every board member, uh that they can take that home, but it would be really nice if uh. If board members can make it on on Mon- uh Wednesday, June eighth at six fifteen. Um and Angie, uh this is Angie Reichman, I know you said earlier about events on Monday, so we should look at Wednesday, I don't know if this. I know when summer kicks off, a lot of things are happening, but uh we thought maybe this might be the best chance.
I mean, that, thank you.
What the goal is to get site logic in, uh look at all the projects, we're also gonna have dollar figures behind every project. So you can start uh planning our LTFM, that will drive our LTFM that you'll prove in July that it will own the system, so. Yeah, so just quickly, um board meetings on the sixteenth. Uh we have uh some committee meetings coming up, then we have a full board work session on on Wednesday to June eighth. And then uh just for everybody's aware, uh I believe the full board, uh. An- Angie, Randy, just remind me, but I think uh the night of, is it the twenty-fifth, the Employee Recognition Event?
Twenty-six.
What's that?
The twenty-sixth, Thursday the twenty-sixth.
Okay, Thursday the twenty-sixth, there's a, it's the annual retiree uh recognition event on the twenty-sixth. Coming up that uh I wanna make sure you understand that by, and then of course, there's Taste on the Lake coming up on, I believe, Wednesday at the. Is that the eleventh, Ange?
Yes.
So, sorry, I got them all out of order here, but we have Taste of Lake on the eleventh, we have a regular board meeting on the sixteenth. We have the recognition on the twenty-sixth of May and uh obviously graduation's Friday night the twenty-seventh. And then June eighth is a full board work session, uh that'll be going through the uh, the uh site logic, so. Just wanna get those announcements out.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you Angie, I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a. Pose, carries. Thank you Chip.